And uh. Okay, now recording. I'm in accordance with the requirements, the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded. And broadcast over the Lunderberg Public Library access channel in this meeting of the Lunderberg Public Library Board of Trustees being conducted remotely. The town of Lunderberg in response to COVID-19 is currently following the guidance from the Lunderberg Board of Health. Massachusetts Public Department of Public Health and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread. In accordance with the governor's order, all public meetings are able to be conducted remotely. This order, which you can find posted on the town website on the COVID-19 Information Center page. Access through the town manager's website allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely. As long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations in the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation in such unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment for this meeting of the Lunderberg Public Library Board of Trustees. It is being convened by Zoom as posted on the town's website identify how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference accordingly, please be aware that other folk. They'd be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Ground rules for this meeting, we're now turning to the first item of the agenda before we do. From me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. The chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. The chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to participate. Provide any comment, questions or motions, please hold your name until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. Members wish to communicate with each other, please do so through the chair taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comment after the members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has listed all public commentators, we'll call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So it is now six forty-seven, and I believe we can turn to the first. Item on the agenda, which is public comment. Is there any public comment? With no public comment, we're going to go to the agenda items. We have three. Agendas, I believe, that have been provided that we can go through and approve. Does everyone have access to them?
Yes.
Okay, so I have already read them. I don't have comments on it, so I'll wait for your. Some indication that you guys are ready to give comments and move on.
Hey, Harry.
Yes, sir.
There are only two sets of minutes on the agenda. Should we wait till the next meeting?
I'm sorry, say that again, please.
January twentieth and February second are the only two sets of meeting minutes on the agenda. I'm wondering.
Honestly, I don't. Order. I think since the other was a special meeting, I I'm sort of fine to discuss that at this point.
Okay, just wanted to double check.
Yeah.
January sixth also.
Okay.
Why don't we, if you don't mind, why don't we look first at January sixth?
January sixth was the the special budget subcommittee meeting. So there was only Donna, Laura. Myself and you, Harry, that that were there that can and. Looks good to me. I make a motion. We accept the. Minutes of January sixth, twenty twenty-two as presented.
Muir, were you were you at that meeting also?
I was. I didn't have any. I didn't have any corrections for it.
Okay.
I think I think I heard Donna second. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so we have to do a roll call on this to approve these minutes. Laura, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So you're right, Laura.
Yes.
Thank you. Donna.
Yes.
Dick.
Yes.
Harry, yes, so they are unanimously approved. Let's now go on to January twenty, please.
Have a comment. On the director's report, the third bullet point. It says there will be a membership assessment for C W for the C W Mars Network. Shouldn't it read, there will be an increase in membership fee for the C W Mars Network?
That would be accurate, yes.
Okay, so how about there will be an increase in the membership assessment?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Muir.
The fifth bullet point under director's report. I would, it says there will also be some specific funding for technology. I would say there will be a request or there is a request for. Funding to purchase technology.
Okay, there is a request for some funding.
There's a request for funding to purchase technology.
For funding. Purchase technology. Okay, thank you.
Small typo at the bottom for attached documents add twenty twenty-two to the third bullet point to be consistent.
January. Oh, yeah, okay.
Hey, everyone, just so you know, I just got a text. Michael Ray will be joining shortly. Are we done reviewing the minutes of January twenty? Okay, it looks like are indicating, yes, so please have a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
I'm moved. That's Maya.
Seconded, Kate.
Okay. Roll call vote, Laura.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Donna.
Yes.
Maya.
Yes.
And Harry, yes, so unanimously approved. Now, we are looking at the special meeting minutes for Wednesday, February second, please. And the people that can comment on this are Dick, Maya, Bob, Harry.
I can't make it.
And Maya, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You were not here, right? You were sick, right, Maya?
Right, yeah, I was just gonna say that I should be removed from that. My apologies, my little. My my youngest son gave me a pretty nasty cold and I was kind of laid out during that meeting, so I wasn't able to join. I apologize.
So Bob, you saw that, right? Remove her from attending?
Yeah, I did.
So and Laura, I'm sorry, what were you saying before?
Well. I will. I can't vote on it, but can I make a comment?
Of course.
Yeah, because it said it's sec down at the adjournment, it says seconded by Kate. But Kate is not in the attending list.
That's a good point.
She's pretty good.
Thank you.
I think that's just a technicality. We need to pick up someone else who would who.
I was there.
I don't remember who it was.
I think it was you, Bob.
Was it me?
I think so.
Is this the?
I don't know why I remember that, but I feel like I do remember that.
All right, thank you.
I was. Okay.
I'm Kate. What were you gonna say?
No, nothing, nothing.
Okay. I have been around when Bob impersonates you, by the way, Kate, and I find it very.
I'm gonna mute.
Second bullet, second bullet point under the special meeting. The fourth word is currently with, believe it should be changed to will.
Yeah, good point.
Oh, yes.
Kate.
We are talking about the, am I in the wrong page here, the Therman, when we looked at the Thera Memorial Bylaws?
No.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, no?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so I was there.
You were?
Kate was there. Why do I feel like I was there?
That was a Wednesday afternoon.
Is that the afternoon meeting that we went in the? Conference room?
I think you were there, Kate, and I was remote.
I mean, I worked on the committee.
I remember you were on you were on the side of the table by the windows.
Yeah.
Replace Maya with Kate and leave the seconded by Kate in.
Maya couldn't make it.
No, I couldn't.
Okay, so you've got that, Bob?
Yep.
So the so the adjournment comment was or that statement was fine as it was. You're gonna get my output, Kate, in and you're gonna change with to will.
Yes, I got that.
Okay, are there any other comments for this? So may I please have a motion to accept these minutes as amended?
This is Dick. I make a motion that we accept the minutes of February the second twenty twenty-two as amended.
I second it. That's Kate.
So we're gonna do a roll call. Dick.
Yes.
Kate.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Harry, yes, so unanimous unanimously approved. Thank you guys very much. Great job on your minutes, Bob, as always.
Thank you.
Um, big boss, you're on.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right. So. Let's see. Can I share my screen? I can. All right, so I pulled up my report so you guys can follow along. Expenses for FY twenty-two coming along. Biggest changes since last month, obviously, are salaries. But pretty big jumps on the utility lines to electricity and heating with or. Both getting close to. Closer to where we would expect them to be. I did just pay a couple more utility bills, so next month they'll be moving along to. I don't think anything to anything else really jumps off the page there. We are two thirds of the way through the year. It's like fifty-six percent expended as of the time that I ran the report, which I think was Monday of this week. Any questions on? This month? All right, so FY twenty-three budget update. We have submitted our requests. We had I met with the town manager late in January to discuss those requests. Also met informally since then with the head of the finance committee. And next Thursday will be my presentation to the full committee. Think it'll be on around seven thirty. But you never know. Sometimes, sometimes there are conflicts for other presenters. I think we share the night with. Eagle House and someone else. But I would expect to be on at this point around seven thirty. Did indeed, as anticipated, request funding for Fridays or additional hours. And shifting over other expenses. To the town's appropriated budget from places like the Friends, so that. As they kind of requested in the January meeting or suggested. They'd be freed up to go above and beyond normal operational support for the library. Doing things that are truly special like the beam projector system. Tonight is the town manager's presentation to the finance committee, so ClearGov hasn't. Hasn't been updated yet on some of our requests, so I can't. Can't update you on how exactly she responded to our requests. Most of the above target requests are still pending in ClearGov, so. We can catch up, I'm sure, on the recording of her presenting this week. I think she so presented to the select board as well on Tuesday. But we'll see what happens. The draft of our LSTA grant is off to the consultant. She'll give us some feedback. And we'll keep honing that draft. The final draft will be due in April. I think it's the twenty-fourth. Vision that I have for the project will be. Enhancing STEM kits and STEM education in town. Kind of building off some programs that we already run, but providing some circulating kits that will increase access. Especially targeting underserved and new populations, so it'll. Dovetail nicely with most of our goals in the strategic plan. And I think we have. We have some great partnerships that will really. Strengthen the proposal that that we that will will. Submit. So I'm optimistic. The other part of the project that I hope will happen will be. A series of programs that will kind of complement that for other age demographics, so for adults. Repair clinics. And. Re to kind of help with reuse recycle, upcycle of technology and other wastes, so. I'm excited about it. I think the staff seems excited about it, and we'll see. We'll get some feedback on on the draft. Keep you guys updated. We have had two more interviews for the digital services position. Two more first interviews scheduled, actually, or I guess they're not they're not finalized, but we're trying to schedule those two other first interviews. And feeling like we'll definitely invite back at least two candidates for a second interview, so that's promising. And the other big note, I did submit the annual report. That'll be included in the booklet if they print them again for any meeting. And did put a copy of that report in the folder for you guys to read if you wanted to.
Excuse me, Muir.
Sure, Bob.
Did you say you had two interviews and you have two more scheduled?
Yes, we've had four total first interviews for the position, and we've got two more scheduled.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Programs have been. Going in the same kind of same flavor as as they have been the last couple of months. It's a it's an interesting in between time. Harry, is that a question?
Yeah, you're I'm sorry, I I but no, I'm not. Let everyone know Michael Ray has joined us.
Welcome, Michael Ray. Hooray.
So let's stop talking about him.
I better delete this next part of my report. Program programs, you know, we've had a last month was. The the garden program that had sixty attendees, which was a virtual program. But, you know, programs are kind of hit or miss right now. Some of them have very good attendance like that. Some of them are kind of sparsely attended. The big the big note for February, next Wednesday. We have a a Black History Month flavor program. It's jazz in the civil rights movement. With a professor, I think, from Tulane, if I'm remembering correctly. And that is supported by the Friends, Sonder Lane Cultural Events Fund. It should be a fascinating presentation and a nice kind of celebratory. Feel to it, I hope, and I hope we'll get lots of people to attend. We are continuing, especially for teens and kids, take home kids. Those have been kind of a popular format as far as engaging with programs. And craft labs too have been quite popular. The family craft lab was well attended last month. And coming up this month is the winter sewing, what seems to be an annual. Annual series of programs for us, winter sewing with Robin Venetia. This year focusing a little more on vegetables than she has in the past. Again, should be there'll be kids and I think. A virtual meeting to for her to present. And talk about techniques and. How to do it at home. It's been an interesting building and maintenance month, too. Had some DVR security camera issues, still kind of lingering with that. Kind of a freight our older DVR for the cameras is is on the fritz. It's on the way out. We also lost heat. Two weekends ago, so it was quite cold in the in the library last Monday. Sent staff home by eleven thirty and closed the library and. At that point, the. Part that had failed had been bypassed in the boiler room. But it takes a while, obviously, for the the system to catch up. It was low fifties when we when we arrived in the morning. I think fifty-three, but by the time we left. Back to normal now and obviously warm days lately haven't been needing to heat it quite as much. Another another thing that I was discussing with Susan is the teen room. She has made a couple temporary short term changes that hopefully will be able to. Support with some purchases by the friends as far as some shelving. The collection in there has been, there's not enough room and there hasn't been enough room for for a while. So she's added a couple shelves, taking down the blackboard in the corner and the bulletin board. So there are two more bays of shelving for her to utilize in there. And we are trying to get rid of the spinning racks that take up what seems like almost a quarter of the room. So that there will be more space for a few more teens at least to be comfortable in there. With the continued. Attendance of teens in the afternoon. Definitely will be beneficial to have a little more space for them to to get comfortable. Wander less to other areas of the library. Technology, the big discussion lately has been about thin client solutions. Obviously, if we are to buy anything, there's some funding that needs to be. Figured out, but I think we do have a plan to start. We can identify funding sources so we can start to replace the remaining thin clients. As a public access computing solution. And finally, the mask requirement has been lifted for town facilities and employees. And although most are still wearing the masks. Think that that is all that I've got for you. Any questions?
I just just commented that your your annual report, like I thought was very good and especially I like the fact that. That you broke out the individual departments, the individual, you know, areas of the of the the library for mention as well, so.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is that the the heat was not working, right?
Yeah.
What if that happened over like a long holiday weekend or something? Is there some kind of alarm or something that would notify you?
Yep, we do. We've got temperature sensors, so we knew, I think it was Sunday afternoon. That the temperature dropped. And, you know, the the workers were already there by the time staff showed up. It just hadn't hadn't recovered enough. For to for us to to stay there all day.
Are there any other comments to the director's report? Okay, so can we please move on to chapter seven from the trustee handbook?
Chapter seven, perfect timing, right? So this chapter is about funding, budgeting and financial management. Yeah, ultimately, the the financial responsibility for the library lies in the hands of the trustees. And so being aware of the financials is obviously imperative. And that's that's why each month, part of my report to the board includes an update on the relevant. Years budget and expenses. Certainly, if and and part of why I ask if you guys have questions. You know, I certainly can discuss more details with with you if. With any of you outside of a meeting, if that's if that's something you need. But it is it is an important thing to understand and to to stay on top of. It is public money, so that that's where the. A trust, the name, the name is in trust, so that's it's really what it's about. Public is trusting that this money will be responsibly expended. And that's why we're all here. So. See, tips for successful budget planning. First, know who does what, you know, as I think that's kind of. With one of the themes that we keep hearing through through the whole handbook itself, knowing who is responsible for what pieces of. Operations. You know, policies and procedures. Lie with the trustees and the day to day. You know. Grunt work is is mine. So we typically what? So we typically what happens for us, you know, we have, we get our our town managers budget, you know, target budget. And then the director. Puts together some some recommendations for our requests. And I meet with the budget subcommittee to discuss those in more detail and submit them and update the whole board. As appropriate. So. You know, the planning context is important too. And, you know, I think the things that that really impact that strategic, the other planning, the strategic plan. Where do we want to go? What do we want to try and do in the future? The general financial fiscal health of the community itself, you know, obviously. Last year, I think it's a good example. We we didn't request much above the town manager's target. But this year, I think we requested something like twelve percent above, so. Last year, we really didn't know what the financial situation was was going to be, what the long term impacts. Short term impacts even of of the pandemic. And this year, we're we're we know a little more. And are a little more secure in asking for more. Takes time, question everything. I think that's a good, good. Good advice for for most situations. Why are we doing things a certain way? Is there a better way to do it? Doing things just because that's the way it's always been done doesn't necessarily bring about the best results. I think this this group is is very good at that. And I'm glad when you guys ask questions, because they are always good questions and. You know, whether it's just about understanding context or or procedures or, you know, some deeper questioning about why we do things. It's always appreciated. Realistic goals, I think, is 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 also good going into the process. Understanding that it's a negotiation too. We're not always going to get everything we ask for. Number six is a is a good. Another good piece, don't restrict your budget to the available funding. When you're budgeting, really, you want to make sure things that need to be taken care of are taken care of and. You know, ultimately, if you can't find the funding in one place, there are other alternatives. You know, we've got state aid, we've got the LSTA grants that we're applying for. And I think. Those are good examples of of doing that. We also in Lunenburg are extremely lucky to have the group of friends that we have, the friends of the library. You know, for whatever whatever reasons, you know, long term, they've established a very healthy and relatively secure. A bunch of funds and they're able to help us immensely with that in a number of different ways. Yeah, so you know, the budget presentation, again, good timing. Next, next week I'll be presenting. You know, to the finance committee. And that for us is really the main, the main type of presentation we do. I have the the one on, it's not one on one, because the finance director is there too, but. In the meeting with the town manager that I have to talk about the the budget requests. Isn't is important too, but it's, you know, a meeting between, you know, town town workers, so. The main public view of our budget request happens at the finance committee meeting. Implementation, you know, although the trustees are really responsible for ultimately for securing funds. The director and the staff implement the funding so that we can provide services to the town. That's, you know, another piece, a big piece of the the monthly report that you guys get, trying to update you guys on on things that we're doing. As far as that process. So trustee should monitor fiscal operations to assure several several things. Financial records are complete and accurate. You know, part of our record keeping happens outside of the library with the finance department. But we can, you know, we also have access to things if if. You know, beyond my report, if if we need to look at those. Also to assure that resources are managed in an economical and efficient manner. I think, you know, that's part of the feedback you guys give on my reports. Asking about. Different expense lines and questioning why we do things in a certain way. The system of internal controls. It exists to safeguard the assets. Accounting is accurate and reporting being done on in timely and accurate manner. And that that really comes down to the annual report that I make to the MBLC. I prepare it, but then it it goes past, you know, the chair, the chair's eyes and. We both sign it before it gets submitted on time. There are a number of of sources for library funding and and this is good to keep in mind. We we've got the friends and we've got the the local municipal support. But there are all sorts of other funding that that we deal with for libraries, you know, the state, the state aid funding that comes directly to us. There are gifts and memorials. Most, most years, we have at least a couple hundred dollars in gifts that are given to the library. Some of them are memorial, some of them are are just people wanting to to. Gift money so that it can be used by the community through the library. Some libraries have foundations, it's kind of like a. Friends on steroids. Oftentimes, it's larger city libraries have have foundations. This is another flavor of five oh C three really, or, you know, nonprofit group. They five oh and C three, I'm not sure. Would be a different section. The code. Grants and foundations, you know, we're pursuing some grants this year with the LSTA grants, but there are always other grants out there. If there are needs that we identify, we can go after them. Donations from service clubs, civic organizations and individuals. We are partnership with the 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 business network group that. Used to meet weekly before the pandemic hit. Generally, that yields a an annual gift from that group. They've been quite generous in the past and are very appreciative that we let them use our space. Yeah, and so another note that's in this chapter is about. Gifts and trusts and endowment funds and and that's, you know. Hopefully, that legislation will will be passed. Pretty soon, kind of still on the same holding pattern that we've been over the last couple of months, but. You know, we'll hopefully soon be in charge of of that ourselves. So another thing for us to take care of. There are, you know, the the next section is about state aid to public libraries and there are estimates that you can. You know, can anticipate how much state aid will be coming to us each year. It's been fairly fairly consistent over the last few years. Coming in around sixteen thousand dollars a year, the last few years for. Let's see. There are always federal funds, grants, a little more details on those. And the last part of the chapter talks about audits. And the fiduciary responsibility for all funds that the trustees have in the library budget. And so. You know, the municipality itself has an annual audit. And that it does include the library department and the funding that we have. And I am sure if we wanted to look at the findings of the audits, we could do that. Any questions about chapter seven? Couple people moving like they're trying to unmute.
Okay, can I ask a question? The question is, are your meetings now live? Are you meeting when you meet in front of these boards? Are they public? Are they? What's the protocol now for?
So the like the presentation that I have to the finance committee. Will be, so they meet typically meet in the. The meeting room at town hall, which is wired. For live broadcast in person and also to have a virtual component. So it's a hybrid meeting. Which I believe is the plan for the near future, at the very least. I'm sure Michael Ray can confirm or deny.
Until the end of July.
Till the end of July. So that. Answer is it's hybrid. If if people want to attend, they can in person and there there's also a virtual component for those who are interested in that.
Great, thank you.
No other questions?
Is there any other discussion regarding the? Chapter seven from the trustee handbook? Okay, so I'd like to move on to the next agenda item bylaws review discussion. And vote, Dick, are you comfortable taking this?
Unmute, yep.
I I first, I first want to thank everybody, in particular Dick, who was really active on this. For their participation in in getting these bylaws to this point, I think relatively quickly and I think. Done in a really good way, so thank you.
Thank you. No, it was it was a a group effort and and especially coming up as Muir did with the the Thayer. Which of a number of the ones that have been looked at was probably closest to the way that we were. So it was really pretty much a matter of. Replacing Black Cast with Lunenburg, replacing Thayer with with Lunenburg and. Doing some some alteration in terms of the the way that they were elected, the number of members. The names of the. The officers of the of the board, and then when we were through with that, turned it over to turned it over to Muir. And said, make it all the same. And and one of the big things was making sure that the we are the. The Lunenburg Board of Library Trustees, not the Lunenburg Public Library Board of Trustees. So that it agrees with the language of the charter and. Muir had put this in the the folder. And at least when I printed it off or I looked at it there, it also has shows all of the all of the edits. So. Open it up to the board to. Comment, correct whatever and would ask Muir to sort of try and keep track of it. Ultimately, put together since since you did the the last edit, the, you know, what whatever needs to be finally edited. And then the question as to once we approve it, where does it go? Does it have to go to the to the town manager? Town hall?
I've got the town council and the monthly town council. Day is Monday. Think Monday, the twenty eighth, not not this coming Monday, Monday, the twenty eighth. And I've got a a time slot with him, so I'll discuss the language, make sure run it by him and then we'll take it from there.
Okay, super.
I'll give you an update when I have that information from him.
Okay, so chime in anybody. They go through it sort of. Line by line or or, you know, the trustees, the number of trustees and qualifications. Term term and remuneration zero. The term is three, the remuneration is zero. And how vacancies are filled, which we've had to do in the past somewhat.
I didn't understand that. Sentence where it says such appointments shall be valid until the next town election period. And then the part in brackets.
Where are we reading now?
At the bottom of the page. Under vacancies.
So once, once the appointment is done, it's valid until the next election. I'm not sure that. Whether that. For the remainder of the term of the replaced trustee, because sometimes. If the. If the replaced trustee, for example, has two more years on the term.
Yeah, we all all would do rather than keeping that appointment. For the remainder of the term, it would just change the year. On which three trustees were up for election, three 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 positions on the board were up for election. If it, if the term lasted longer than, you know, the rest of. The year until the next election, if that makes sense. So if there are two, if there were two years left and and on a member who resigned on that that position. That position would become up. At the next election. And if it had been a year, that had been a year where. Two board members were up, it would then be three positions up for election.
What if there were three?
But the election is only. For the remainder of that term. I don't recall the last time we did it.
Yes, Laura. It was Laura, yeah.
If someone resigns from their position, the election is only until the remainder of their term.
So so there would be the election, they would be up, that position would be up for election at the next. Town meeting, the next town election, but that would be just for the remainder of that term.
Correct.
So do we need the italic, the italicized phrase there?
We probably don't. Because that. Yeah, is, I think, in the charter.
Right, that the 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 method of doing this with the joint boards and everything is is covered, covered in there, so I think that. I think that just complicates because that's the the prior sentence, appointments shall be valid until the next town election period. So I think we can probably dispense with that.
We'll do so.
Excellent. Okay, section is responsibilities of the Board of Trustees and again, it cites. Mass General Laws. Cites the the bylaws. Of the of the town. And pretty much goes along with the. What the what the charter. But the charter says in what we just went over with the. The handbook.
Good, good, good thing these all match up.
Yeah, just how it happens. The appointment of the director. We regularly evaluate. Pretty clear. Policies. Library budget. Planning, which we've just done. The special committees we played around with a little bit in that. The special committees we played around with a little bit in that. Uh, the way that we have always done it is that the, uh. You know, we basically volunteer for what we want to be on. And then those, the appointments technically are made by, by the chair. So that's why that was there and any, any other special committees. Only last as long as the job lasts. So, uh, for example, the committee that, that we had for. Uh, the five-year plan, once that, once that job was done, the committee is automatically disbanded. The collective authority of the board. That everything is done by a quorum of, of the, of the board, the vote. No individual trustee may make decisions, act or speak for the board unless specifically authorized to do so. By a majority vote of the membership of the board of the duly called meeting. Uh, you've seen that sometimes with, you know. News reports where a board member of this board or that board will. You know, speak out and the rest of the board is going, no, 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 no. You know, we, we, we speak as a board. We don't speak as individuals, uh, you know, unless you're authorized by the board. So I mean, that's. Pretty clear. Advocacy.
I have a question there.
Yep.
Um, C, it says trustees should study and support legislation. Which will bring about the greatest good to the greatest number of libraries. So we should advocate for things that might not be good for our library?
I think the thought is that if there is library legislation. That benefits libraries in general would also benefit ours. I don't think you would. Envision a, envision a situation where, uh, you would be looking at. Legislation that increases Boston Public Library's share and cuts everybody else's budget. Now, so I think what's good for one library is likely going to be good for all. So I, I'm not sure how that.
It seems kind of strange wording.
Yeah. Who else want to chime in on that one?
It is.
It's weird.
It is a noticeable, it, it, you know, the language is language you notice. But I don't think, as I think about it, is not likely to be. Exclusive. Um, an exclusive distinction. I think you could envision. Situations where. There might be an interest to your specific library as a trustee. You know, for us, the Lunenburg Public Library. That might not necessarily benefit. All, you know. As, as we're advocating for legislation. I think what the phrase is suggesting is that thinking about the benefit of. Libraries in a more general sense than your specific library. Uh, is an important goal.
Yeah, I, um, if I may, I totally agree with what Muir just said. I interpret that as trustees. Um, should be generally, um, advocates of all libraries.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it exclude, I don't think it excludes. Or, or would, or would make us, you know, under these bylaws support something would not be good for us. In that the greatest number of libraries includes us.
May I ask you a question on this topic?
Yeah.
What's the, what's the necessity of, uh, this? Like without it, would, would members still behave similarly? Or is this a needed thing to, for a certain goal?
I think the goal is, is part of the, as part of the, the bylaws, which really are, are, you know, a policy document. Uh, that. It would be good to have something in there. As a directive that trustees as part of their duty should support. Legislation that benefits libraries, whether we, you know, the, the, maybe just change the wording. Uh, to something like that, rather than this, the greatest good for the greatest number. And simply have it, trustees should study and support legislation which benefits libraries. Because that is, that should be the way.
Benefit our library. I mean, I, the library. Because it, it's. I don't know that. We've ever expressed anywhere else that it's our goal to support. Other libraries. I, it might just be. Easier to specify. The Lunenburg Public Library, since they are our bylaws.
But do we really want to be that narrow that we're only going, we're only going to support legislation if it benefits us?
Um, in this case, I, I might, I might argue, yeah. Just because for this specific document, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I, I think, we, we haven't gone through the handbook. Far enough yet to get to the chapter on advocacy. Um, and. So I think knowing. Knowing what's coming. Uh, I think this statement in the bylaws would serve as. Uh, formalizing of that responsibility. Um, and I, I do think that probably this is one of the. Um, one of the areas where we spend. Uh, very little amount of time thinking about our specific group, um, and, and certain, some, some. You know, some boards, uh, expend a lot more energy, uh, in that, in that realm. But I think that that, that's what this phrase really is, is driving at, um, the. That the, the role that library trustees can and probably should play in, you know, the annual. Annual process of making new laws or changing laws for the state, um, and, and, and other laws, but. Um, you know, thinking specifically about. The legislative brunches or lunches that happen, you know, ac- across the state. Uh, where, that are organized by libraries, mostly trustees, um, and, and sometimes directors have some involvement in it. Um, in order to, you know. Interact with, you know, the state legislators and, and, and push forward. Um, legislation that, that does benefit libraries in the state and whether that's, you know, increasing or maintaining funding levels. Um, or, or other, other, um, outcomes, uh, it is, is important that, that people. Uh, ex, individuals, um, voice, uh. Voice, uh, concerns and, and, um, support for, you know, those things, um, and. The most logical people to, to perform that role are library trustees. Cause you're connected to what's happening, um, you know, you know, through our meetings and, and through interacting at the library and. And knowing your individual communities, um, you've got expertise that can really positively impact that process. So, you know, I think, I, I think it's going to be difficult for you guys to, to know exactly how you want this phrased. Without, without thinking longer about advocacy and, and maybe waiting for when we review. You know, that part of the handbook a little more. That's my impression of, of the, what the intent would be on this section, on this section of, of the language. Harry, I see your hand.
Yeah, I, I, I actually, sorry, I'm, okay, I thought I was muted. I, I think we're dwelling on this quite a long time. I, I have just a suggestion. Um, I don't know that we really need to push it back, but first C, trustees should study and support legislation, which will. Bring benefit to the Lunenburg Public Library as well as the greatest good to the greatest number of libraries. And I think that, um, sort of addresses it, 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 I think. Highlights our own library, which I think is fine, but it doesn't exclude other libraries. It includes other libraries. And I think that's how we, I think that's how we intend to operate. Or how we do operate.
That's a, I think that's a good suggestion because you think about things like the, uh. The building grants, uh, you know, those don't always benefit us, but it certainly, you know, it did. And it may in the future and you would certainly want to be able to support that. So you want to run that by, run, run that by us again? Harry?
Uh, I think what I said was trustees should study and support legislation. Which will be supportive of the Lunenburg Public Library and will bring about the greatest good to the greatest number of libraries.
Okay, so that just that, that puts us in particular, but keeps the, keeps the larger idea of. As library trustees, we're all in this together.
And I think that's a good concept.
Okay, is that?
I'm sorry, who did you ask if that works? Cause I was gonna.
Oh, that's, I think that does sound better.
Okay.
And Maya, are you still there?
That, she's.
Well, I'm here. I just, I thought I was unmuted. I was talking to myself. That's fine. No, I think that's great. That was kind of the point I was, yes, happy.
Okay.
Okay, the officers. Pretty clear cut.
I have a question.
Yep.
Under, um, duties of the chair and the, uh, letter C. It says, um, that the, uh. To serve as an ex officio member of each committee. That doesn't affect, like, if we have a subcommittee meeting that has three members and then the ex officio member, does that affect open meeting laws?
It, once. Once you have, if you, if you have. Michael Ray, if you have even three members meeting together to make decisions.
Not until you hit a quorum. So since this is a seven-member board, uh, you hit that at four.
So if a person is quote unquote ex officio, unless he shows up. For some, for some reason, and I mean, like, uh, when we had the. Uh, the subcommittee to do this and Harry showed up, I mean, the meeting was, the meeting was posted as was the, uh. As was the budget committee. So.
Yeah, but it's really just describing the. The role of the, the, that position on the board, you know, and. Differences between individual chairpersons, um, might. Might manifest, you know, Harry doesn't attend all subcommittee meetings. Um, or ad hoc committee meetings, but he might, you know, someone else might, if they want to and, and don't, they don't necessarily have to. Participate, um, on the same level as the other, you know, members that have been appointed to that committee. But the, the, that is, you know, to know that what's happening and, and. Maintain awareness of the, the dynamics of that smaller group. Um, are, are, are described as part of the, the role of, of the chairperson of the board as a whole, you know, but.
My, my, my sense, my sense right along is even if I, if I were on a, a subcommittee that only had. You know, technically three members, that's still post the meeting. Because we're, we're, we're meeting, we're discussing, we're going to make decisions. Uh, and even if we don't, you know, we have, uh, we may not have a quorum. But we're still going to make decisions to bring back to the board, so.
Well, we didn't for the, uh, strategic plan. Post any of those.
There were only, there were three of us plus.
Yeah, there were three of us.
There, there wa- wasn't there one meeting that Harry? Joined us for that we posted? I can't remember. I feel like there was.
I don't think so. I think that I only participated in that, in our, in our monthly meetings.
I don't, I don't, I don't really, I think the ex officio, we'll see it as a major thing with, with posting.
Okay, I, I do have a suggestion on this. So I would suggest that maybe you want to change the wording to say. Uh, and this is point C, to appoint all committees to pursue the work of the board. And may, rather than to serve and may serve as an ex officio member of each.
Okay, that puts it into the realm of, of maybe.
Okay, are other people okay with that? And Muir, I just want to make sure you, you're making the notes on this, correct?
I am. Thank you. I'll cut up even.
Okay, down to the duties of the vice chair, which is basically to be the chair when the. Chair is available. The secretary who does a wonderful job.
I haven't actually ever done any correspondence. Uh, that, that be there.
Yeah, if we, uh, you know, if we wanted to send letters, you would be the, you would be the guy.
Or you could, usually Harry does that.
Well, but, you know, Harry can have, you know, the, the, just because this is your duty, but. Yeah, I think it's the, I think it's generally the duty of the secretary, but individual, you know, the chair or whatever might. Might still be able to do it on his own. This doesn't preclude necessarily.
Okay.
I'm, I'm actually trying to think of any letter I've written.
I, I don't. Because sometimes I ask Muir to do it.
Yeah, I don't. Yeah, I, I think I wrote a letter commending Dan Nedereski. Um, and I may have also written correspondence to the director of the DPW.
I think, I think that's right. I don't honestly think I've written anything other than emails to Heather or. Julie or maybe Michael Ray. And, okay, so the, and met with them, so.
The, the board, the board generally controls or, you know, in, in, in a situation like that where we can ask. Muir to do it because of, of his, his knowledge and his relationship, but it still comes from the board and if. Muir wasn't available, Bob, be your job.
Okay.
Okay, the open meeting law, we took as, as it was and, uh. Added, I think, on Kate's recommendation, the, uh. The ending, which is basically what we've, you know, been doing, uh, what Harry's been doing on the, uh, on the agenda. Which is instructions on how to remotely participate.
Um, I, I just thought of a question. Um, I, I just thought of a question. There's a lot of references to the mass general laws in here, quote, you know, quoting chapters and sections. Um, we just copied these from the Lancaster bylaws. Do, we don't have any sense whether these are accurate or. Or should we bother to verify these? Or do we need to worry about that?
I can, I'll, I'll go through and, and verify. Make sure the sections and chapter numbers are accurate. None of them struck me as, um. Weird, but I, I obviously don't have all of that memorized, so.
Yeah, yeah.
For the most part, they were chapters and sections that, you know, I. Seemed right, but. Yeah, that's, I'll, I'll, I'll verify that for sure.
Okay, regular meetings. So this is the third Thursday at six forty-five. Special meetings, quorum, nothing much there, and then, uh. Redid the order of business to reflect the way that our. Agenda works. We love the trustee emeritus thing, which was something that they came, came from them, which is just nice, who knows? And then, uh. How this can be amended, and finally. That everything has to be. Consistent with Lunenburg. Charter and bylaws, uh, as well, so. And I would think that would be what the town council would be looking at, just like. Don't know that there would be anything else, anything in there, but.
Yeah. I'll make sure I ask him to make sure, you know, about that specifically.
Yeah. So after all of these years, there have been bylaws. Not sure where they ended up, but they were bylaws, but we're now at the point where we can have. A set of up to date bylaws that reflect what this board is and how this board operates, so.
So, Dick, I have a question for you. Um, in the agenda, we had, um, review, discuss and vote. And I know we talked, uh, actually in the subcommittee about voting. Um, it, at this moment, is there, is it appropriate to vote on these bylaws as amended?
I would think so, because then it can be. Muir can, can, you know, just put together and polish the amended. Bylaws so that on Monday he can, when he meets with the, uh. Town council, but I, I would think that, yeah, I think they're approvable.
I, I, I agree with you. Do we, other people have thoughts on that? Um, I didn't hear any objections, so, um, could we please have a motion? To, uh, accept the bylaws as amended?
So moved.
Seconded, Kate.
Okay, so I'd like to do a roll call vote, please, Laura. I, I'm sorry, Laura.
Yes.
Thank you. Bob?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Donna?
Donna.
Donna?
Yeah. I'm not muted.
Uh, I'm sorry, was that Donna?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, okay, so Donna was affirmative and Maya?
Yes.
Okay, Harry, yes, so unanimously approved. Hey, um, once again, for everybody who worked on this, thank you. It's, uh, it's nice to have these. Becoming in place again.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, are there any board comments?
Yeah, friends, friends first.
Uh, very sorry, uh, friends update, so, uh, Muir or Dick or, I think that I was at that meeting as well, but. With one of the two of you like to take that?
Muir, Muir would love to.
Um, it was actually, I think, our shortest meeting in a long time. A pretty brief director's report. They talked a little bit about organizing for book sales, um, pop-up book sales and, uh. I don't think there was any other, oh, yeah, go ahead, Harry.
So there was, there was a significant amount of discussion, um, which actually, uh, Robin had sort of shepherded. About, um, in, in allowing the library to encourage the friends. Sorry, allowing the friends to encourage their members. To, um, participate in, in Amazon smiles. Um, because a very small percentage of the friends' members. Actually participate in it and, um, it does contribute to the friends' funding. And I believe the conclusion was that the friends were in fact going to do that. Is that accurate, Muir?
Yeah, they were preparing to, um, send an email campaign through. What did they use? Mailchimp?
Yeah, um, there, there was also, uh, in, at the moment, any donations to the friends. Uh, has to be done via a mailed or a check, either mailed or brought to the library or however. And there was quite a lot of discussion about, um, joining the twenty-first century. Um, in allowing, uh, electronic enrollment, uh. Of the friends and electronic donations to the friends. And there was discussion about, there's a cost to doing that. Um, but I think the general thought was there is a cost, you do pay for credit card processing, et cetera. But it would increase the general funding of the friends.
A, a lot of that, a lot of that revolved around the fact that they're looking to do, uh, redo or have a website. And, uh, a, a, an online present. And the online presence then leads to these other possibilities where memberships, you, you can, you know, like. We're talking earlier on about Tower Hill, well, all of my Tower Hill membership is done online, my payments are done online, et cetera. And one of the things that was brought up is on some of the pay sites allow you, if I want to donate fifty dollars. I can donate fifty-one dollars and twenty cents to cover so that the organization gets the full fifty dollars. And that, that, that sort of thing, I think is, I think is Robin very much sort of dragging, uh, dragging them into, uh. Into the, into this new world, uh, and now hopefully they will, they will pursue that. And again, with the mailchimp or whatever, getting out the fact that, you know, it's, if you use Amazon, it's pretty easy to simply go and. You know, a, a miniscule amount of every purchase over, you know, the number of people can add up, so. That was definitely one of the things that they were, that they were looking at.
And similarly, they discussed sending acknowledgements of gifts electronically instead of physically. Which also, you know, would involve an expense. Uh, but might overall, you know, net positively. Effect their, their, um, financials, so, you're saving. What is it, fifty-five? Is it more than fifty-five cents now?
Yeah, I think, I think it's actually gonna, would reduce, I think it would reduce their expenses because they would not be physically mailing. Um, to people who they, uh, have email addresses for and that they would mail to only those that. They couldn't communicate with electronically, which. Is really sort of a modern way that, uh, five oh one C three is communicate with, with members.
That about sums it.
I'm sorry, Dick?
So that about sums it up.
Yep, okay. Uh, any questions about the friends meeting? I'm hearing no questions. Um, I'd like to ask if there's any board comments. Okay, so I don't hear any board comments either. It is eight oh six PM. May I please have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. This is Dick.
Would.
Donna.
Thank you. Um, roll call vote, Laura. So. Roll, roll call vote, please, Laura.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Maya?
Yes, I have a delay.
Michael Ray?
Yes.
Sure, yes. I'm gonna, you guys.
And Muir, hey, guys, as always, thank you so much for participating.
Thank you, Harry.
Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.